Okay, it's 6 o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
That's the key.
Good, thank you. Any adjustments to the select board agenda? Anything? No? Public comments?
Public?
No? Approved bills and payrolls, so done. Approved minutes from the April 12th meeting, that's been done.
Robin, did that end up with you?
I don't have it. Thank you.
Okay, so you're up, Robin. Town clerk's report.
Okay, the school was on vacation last week, so I didn't have a chance to call them about the May 7th. I called this morning. They were having problems getting their computers up when I called. And they were gonna call me back. And by 2:30, I still haven't received a call back, so I have to call them again tomorrow morning.
Uh huh.
That's about the room for the meeting?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep, making sure that Donnie will set it up for us.
Okay.
Yep.
Speaking of reservations, this is off topic a little bit. Can you put July 30th on your town hall calendar for the old home days?
Yes.
July 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Um, my recording's up to date and... We had a call from Harburg PD about a gravestone that they found in a house in Harburg that they're cleaning up, that the house is gonna be put up for auction. And they've got it determined that the gravestone belongs to Southwoodberry Cemetery.
Wow.
Really?
And it goes back to 1898.
Is it just one of those flat ones that you could...
I haven't seen it. I don't know if Patty's seen it or not, but it belonged to Hattie Bell Lieford.
Oh, no. Really?
Yep.
Oh, that's neighboring property to us.
Yeah, Hattie Bell.
Hattie Bell.
Yeah.
Hattie Bell Road.
Yeah.
Wondering who Hattie Bell was.
Yeah.
She was...
I guess she was quite a character.
She was a force of nature.
Yeah. Really? You've done some research on her?
No, well, I mean, if you have an adjoining property, why not?
Sure.
Learn about somebody. That's interesting. Where is the gravestone now?
I believe it's at Harburg PD.
Okay. That should be something that the cemetery commission gets to know about.
Yeah, Patty, I believe Patty's gonna talk about it when she gets here, going to.
Got it.
Probably a marble limestone.
Or slate.
Or limestone.
Or slate.
Or slate, 1898, yeah.
Yeah, very well could be slate.
Yeah.
But if you could read it, more likely slate.
So you don't have anything about the treasurer's report then?
Ah, Brandy left me some stuff, yes. Um, the first...
So are we moving on, sir?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Anything else from the...
I did wanna make sure, you know, just mention if you need anything for the town meeting on May 7th. You know, you can ask us.
Okay.
What might we need?
Well, I mean, I don't know. The select board of civil authority needs to be there to count votes and all that. And she's gonna bring the checklist and the name tags and the box with the little ballots in it and all that stuff. So, you know, if she needs any help carding things or anything.
No, I should be good with that.
Good, okay.
Yes ma'am.
I'll probably still bring one of those sneeze guides to put up in front of whoever's gonna be taking the names and checking off on the checklist.
As you come up the stairs?
Right.
Yeah, that's nice.
Well, we still don't have the gym yet.
Well, when I talked to Mr. Kay this morning, I said it was back in February. And I believe Chris is the one that had asked for the gym originally. He said, "I remember that."
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I had...
I'll ask Mr. Kay again tomorrow when I drop off my kids. So I can have something out.
Well, you know, at that point, the town hall will be available, you know, possible.
Yep.
If something else is planned for the gym on May 7th.
Well, I bet there'd be a pretty good turnout for that.
Yeah.
Better be.
Yeah, I should hope so.
Well, that's why Greenup Day got moved.
Right, and that's why we decided to do it in the gym rather than the town hall to begin with.
Yep. Anything else from the...
From the clerk, I believe that's it.
Okay. Can we move on to treasurer's report?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Back March 23rd, the grader hit a utility pole over on the county road. The cost of this said utility pole is $1,228.65. We have a thousand-dollar deductible. And she wants to know, do you want her to file a claim for this or pay out? And not file a claim.
And the difference is...
Two hundred and something dollars.
Two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
$228.65.
No.
So is this kind of in a relation to dealing with insurance companies that if you take a claim, they sometimes...
Well, are you pretty sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna increase our rate.
No, this would be liability insurance. It shouldn't make any difference, but...
But it would be a lot...
She's gonna have $228 or whatever time tied up in doing it.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd like to pay it out personally.
Just pay it without making a claim?
That's my opinion, but I'll take everybody else's.
Got a motion?
Well, wait a minute.
It's a conversation.
Raise the rates.
No, no, it wouldn't, but it's still a lot of work to get the claim and everything.
You have to grant it if she wants to do it.
Right.
Right, well, that's why she kicked it over to us.
Okay.
In other words, she could've just filed a claim.
So we're gonna pay it all ourselves?
Yeah, just pay the 1,200 and something dollars.
We have the money.
Oh, yeah.
Don't be too big an earner.
In this case...
You say that at every meeting, okay?
In this case, it expedites a process that would otherwise be like kind of problematic. This is a really, I don't know, I think this is an easy one. There are some hard ones out there. This is an easy one.
We don't have a line item for insurance claims, but maybe we should.
Well, maybe that's...
We won't need it.
I don't think.
Okay, so we all agree on that. Just pay, just pay it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Her treasurer's report, she's got payroll expenses for the last two weeks of $8,419.73. Accounts payable was $24,547.41. She has income of $812.60, which will take in fleet permits, recordings, copies, dog licenses, land recordings, land copies, marriage license, prepaid tax, and vault fees. And then we've also, we have received a check for delinquent taxes, or checks for delinquent taxes of $24,354.13.
Cool.
That's one or that's a...
More than one.
That's collected, must be.
Yeah.
Good.
And she's also received Class 2 3 Road Highway supplement of $20,019.79.
Any comments?
What she gave me.
So that supplement would be in addition to the fiscal year 23 allotment that they'll be giving us. That's great.
Really?
Yeah.
Extra?
Yeah.
Is that still COVID money?
It should be additional money.
They've been doing that since the pandemic. We got at least one or two payments.
Was that, when they started doing that, was that in replacing the individual grants that they used to give out? They just spread it all out? No?
No, no, it's just in addition.
Yep, they just...
She's gonna break down here...
They threw money out, yeah.
She's gonna break down here. Highway supplement was $1,994.95. Class 3, $12,006.29.73. Class 2, $5,395.11. Which makes up the 20.
Oh, so it's not all...
2019.
Okay.
Well, we're coming up pretty well after the telephone poll then, huh?
You wanna jump Chuck ahead because we're ahead of...
Uh...
Or...
You want Chuck to come up or when you say...
Go ahead.
6:30, the West Woodbury Cemetery...
We've got 15 minutes before the West Woodbury group comes in.
We could do town plan.
So we could do either town howard report or town plan.
You better go with the plan.
All right.
Okay. Plan, planning commission.
Finally.
Yeah.
Could be a drum roll or anything.
So we had a hearing, yeah, and a couple of comments. I have a comment.
You have a comment?
I don't believe there were ever thousands of men working at the quarry.
There was.
Thousands?
Thirty-five hundred at one time.
Working at the quarry or...
All quarries.
What?
All quarries. There was seven quarries on that mountain that were up there at the same time.
Okay.
That's why the railroad tracks are there.
Yeah. Okay.
And there used to be boarding houses up this area?
Yeah, on Flat Street, where those houses is of course...
But there was a boarding, there was supposed to be a big boarding house right up on the road, you know, it was kind of...
Well, um, Spring Valley's a real...
That old house is part of that old...
There's the white boarding house, there's the Fletcher boarding house, there's the blue boarding house, and the foundations are all still there. There used to be a colony where you walk over that town road and across the railroad tracks, where you'd go in by maned sheds. What's that guy's name now?
Phil Letson.
Phil Letson. So the snow machine trail was up through there. There was a German settlement in there and they had one Dutch oven, a built Dutch oven there, and everybody in town cooked on it.
Wow.
What ended that settlement was somebody homesell right there.
Oh.
What's that?
Somebody in the colony homesells right there and they dispersed.
Shut it all down.
Hmm. So the Germans were working in the quarries too?
Everybody.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It was a...
My grandmother...
Whole town.
She grew up right where Lewis Pratt was. And she talks about all the men on Friday nights would go out and cut a railcar loose and everybody pile on it. And they'd ride to Harburg. Do the drinking, partying.
Had to get back, it was uphill.
Monday morning. They'd ride up on the train, drag them bags up on the car.
Are we gonna start talking about Queen of the Mountain too or...
No, yeah, she's on the other side. She's on the other side.
Okay, well, okay, I'll stop complaining about that then.
William Norton said there used to be a pool hall here and everything else and it was for the...
The little house right next to the post office was a pool hall and laundromat.
Wow.
They could go and do the laundry and do the poop sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, the house that we own up on the Cabbet Road, that used to be the Cougar Club, that was their buyer in town.
It was mine, yeah.
Private club.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where's that? Not the one where Danny lives? Oh, really? Okay, cool. That'd look like a new house.
Chuck, was there ever a name for that hill where the quarries are?
Different house now.
Old town name. Cause this was asking me about that. I was aware.
Me either.
Gerald Morris told the story about...
Um, the hill, I guess we call it Cabbet Hill at this point, but the hill where the present quarry is and then the series of quarries.
Oh.
The whiz, I can't think of her, Elizabeth...
Twiz Dow?
Yeah, Elizabeth Dow. She wants to, had asked me if there was ever a name for that hill or mountain. Or if there's round hills, just generally.
I'd, if there was, I'd forgotten it. I don't think I've ever heard of it.
Seems like you would know to anybody.
Yeah, it doesn't show up on the maps.
The map says no name for it.
Yeah, there's no name for it.
I'll report back to her then.
Yeah, not Robeson Mount or Robinson, Robeson Mountain?
Robinson Mountain is a little further to the east.
Is what?
It's a little further to the east.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the next knoll over.
Gerald Morris, remember Gerald, he talked about, they used to go out to the aradics, you know, with the star bits and pound them. And that's what made foundation stones out of it. And he said that when the quarry started flooding, there was somebody, foreman's brother or something was head of fisheries or, you know, and they would take their, they put trout in their lunch containers, you know, and they put the trout in the quarries. And I never knew of anybody catching any trout out of there, but...
Well, over on, excuse me, over on Blue Quarry...
Yeah.
There's, I've caught fish, I've got rook trout out of there, native trout, pink, nice pink native rook trout. Not very big, five, six inches.
Yeah.
That's way over on Blue Quarry next to Buck Lake.
Yeah, that's always in there, yeah.
Yeah. But as far as Woodbury Quarry and Gray Quarry, I've never caught.
Yeah.
Got to whip trout, but never caught anything. But over on the old Blue Quarry, we used to catch them over there.
If you go up off the rail trail, it's called Corkscrew Road, that goes up to the Buck Lake Road.
Uh huh.
That whole road is littered with aradics that have been carved and chunks taken out of them. It's like a dinosaur graveyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not aradics.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them are small, little outcroppings.
Yeah, they're outcrops. And that's what most of that stone is coming from.
Yeah.
The aradics, the aradics have a specific term, right? Aradics are glacial terms.
Glacier. When down by that log cabin that I had the golf, right up behind that, somebody tried quarrying up there blasting the gas, 'cause it's, yeah, everywhere I'm in.
Yeah, there's a little place up that way behind my house that, where you can tell somebody tried to take some stones out at one time, drill holes and stuff like that.
Okay.
Anyway.
Good history.
One of the few things we're on the quarry, I mean, it's a little off, but May 11th...
We've been off.
Yeah, we're off.
May 11th is gonna be the memorial service for John Patwin.
Oh, really?
It's gonna be in Cabot at the Pavilion.
By the Redfield?
Yep, Redfield.
May 11th?
May 11th. It's gonna be at 11 o'clock? May 11th? Oh, I'm, sorry, 14th.
Oh, 14th.
May 14th at 11:00. I knew there was 11 in there.
Well, I couldn't remember. I read it, but I couldn't remember.
But he was the foreman up at this quarry for many years.
And he gave a tremendous talk here.
Yeah, probably still available on HCTV.
He was the youngest of the Patwans, I believe.
The youngest of Henry Patwans.
Yeah, Henry's boys.
A lot of Patwans.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous amount.
Oh, I'm sorry, he went, I mean... And where is it in Cabot?
He was down in North Carolina for a long time.
Yes.
By the Bob Field, Redfield there, head out the Lower Cabot Road.
Like on the Lower Cabot.
Oh, it's not gonna be in a building? Is it just...
There's a pavilion.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a pavilion, adjacent to it.
Okay. Okay, okay. Patty, do you wanna, is that, or do you wanna, should we go by the agenda now?
Uh, no, we gotta finish this up.
People from, people from West Woodbury aren't here yet, so we got 10 minutes. He could show up at any time.
We really should finish up the town plan.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that was our, that was our...
That's where we started.
That's where we started, so...
You were talking about the Dutch quarry, right? It's a nice quarry. A lot of quarry.
Did you, did you have any comments after the hearing?
No, just Norm had made those, his comments, known to us right when we had the draft of the enhanced energy plan.
Right.
And I think I alluded to that at our meeting.
You did.
We weren't happy with the original language and so the language that's in the enhanced energy plan is...
It's a modification of that language based on public comment already.
We kept the chart, we sort of had to, but we did add language saying that we didn't think that the chart, especially regarding heat pumps, was realistic for weather.
Right.
So totally disregards the fact that we have a lot of forest here and a lot of people like to burn wood.
And what percentage, it's a significant number of percentage of people that burn wood for heat in this town. Is it 30% or something?
It's more than that, over 50%.
It's over 50%.
More than 30.
Yeah. There's a percentage in this town plan.
Yeah, it's, I have it somewhere, but it's over, I think it's over 50%.
Yeah, it's totally unrealistic, so, but...
Uh, well, Chris Codyce will make a motion to approve the town plan as written.
Want to second that?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done.
Terrific work.
End of it.
Terrific work.
Free at last.
Really?
Nope, not even close to free, sorry.
Just a step 25 out of 40, or something like that.
Actually, this is step 12 out of 32.
Wow.
So we have to file this now within 30 days to the Department of Housing and Community Development and to the Regional Planning Commission.
Correct.
And it's the select board that has to file, is that true?
We have to file it.
The select board has to file, yeah.
Correct.
Which means...
The select board...
You'll do it?
You know, I can give you all the email addresses and contact information.
Cause the select board doesn't really have an email address.
Yep, so Skip, I think what we need is, we have the final draft. If there have been any modifications based on public comment, we would need to see that draft. If there have not been, because we didn't, we didn't see as a select board any significant public comment that needed to be addressed directly. Because everything that was in public comments were things that did not fall into the timeframe that were appropriate. All things that could be modified down the line.
Sure.
So what we need to do is we need to make sure that we understand how to file it appropriately.
I'll do it enough tomorrow.
And any help you can give us with that would be much appreciated.
Robin, the town clerk, and then the select board could authorize...
It has to come...
Cover letter from the select board.
It has to, it has to come under the bill of the town with all the select board members signing it.
Yeah. I can get the language for that. I'll write the letter.
You don't have to write the letter as long as you give us the guidance.
Okay.
Hey, if you want to write the letter.
Okay, write.
Otherwise, the clerk has to write the letter.
Okay.
I'll send you a document if you can use it fine, if not...
We'll modify it as need be.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Skip.
Okay, thank you.
Don't wait until the next meeting, cause I won't be here, so if we could...
Uh, we don't have that much time. We need to sign it sooner than later.
Well, that's what I'm...
Yeah, 30 days.
Yep, but...
But you'll have the information tomorrow.
It's, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Good.
And could you CC the court?
Of course.
And CC?
I'd rather CC the whole board.
Yeah.
I'll send you the link to the planning.
That would be perfect. If I could CC the entire board, that would be more appropriate.
There you are. Come on now.
Terrific.
It's dealer's, dealer's choice.
Thanks, Skip.
Perfect timing.
Rock the mayor, we'll get him to the master. How you doing? Hey.
How are you?
Good, you?
Good.
So...
All right, so who's gonna lead this discussion from...
You wanna introduce yourselves first? We can introduce. I'm Diana Peduzzi, Peter Pelts. Chris, you probably met before he was on the board, but Peter and I are new and we really don't know much about what was committed on behalf of you guys or on behalf of the town, so maybe you can bring us up to speed.
I can help with that too. It's also in the select board minutes tonight. I'm Dan Corshing, Mayor of Zep, Tim Hall. So we came last fall, I believe it was, to try and get the West Woodbury Cemetery expanded. And we met with Chris, heated some stuff up there. And I don't know that I came back to another meeting, but my understanding was at the end if we did the stumping and the fence, the town would do the survey and the deed. The town did commit to that.
The town committed to that.
Okay.
Correct.
And not the cemetery commission, but the town.
Did the town budget for it, even though they committed for it?
I don't know, I don't know if we did or not.
I believe we did, but...
But...
I think, I'm pretty sure you did.
Yeah.
And so it's in the budget somewhere?
I can't say 100% sure of it.
The only expense today would be the quick claim to just transfer the ownership of the property.
Well, the survey is gonna be expensive.
Create a posted stamp and then deed.
When the girl that done the survey up here, didn't she go up to West Woodbury?
We asked her to do the survey of this West Woodbury Cemetery and when where the road, new road would be. And she only had time to do the road, so we would ask her to come and do...
She's from Cabot?
Yeah, yeah, we said Genet.
We said Genet.
Also to bring you up to speed, the neighbors had some concerns, so we addressed them by saying there would only be cremations in the front of the cemetery and burials in the back. And then the other one was Chris was gonna go up with some students and stuff and make sure that the property was, you know, perking, had the depth, had no ledge. Because the cemetery commission didn't want to inherit something that they couldn't use.
Correct.
And he went up and gave it the green light.
We did, yeah.
And if we need... How did you do that?
We used ground penetrating radar
Oh.
to make sure that we didn't have depth of bedrock problems.
Good, yeah.
So we used GPR and we did auger surveys down to six meters depth, which is...
Plenty.
More than enough. And we're basically going into a coarse till. And after you guys stumped it, we came and did a quick look. I'm sorry, I didn't get you guys out there at the same time. But we have, I mean, basically, there's no, there's no bedrock available, right? It's, it's coarse material, takes a bit to dig through, but there's no bedrock. So that's the percolation problem. It's all until. It's all until. And we have a cursory report that we can certainly give to the cemetery commission if that's useful. But it's a student-based report, it's not a professional report. But the observations, I think, would hold up no matter who took a look at it.
It's a free report.
It's, it's very much a free report. And we also, I mean, we, we did go out and we surveyed the property. So anybody else who wants to come in and check the survey of, you know, the total property area, we did it by pace and compass.
So we could, so you could provide that so we can give it to the surveyor?
And you can give that to the surveyor and you guys can go to guns on it from there.
Hopefully she can, that'll help, make her work easier.
Or not.
Yeah.
If she entirely disagrees with us, it's not gonna make it easier, but...
So I was just curious as to why the cemetery commission has like $22,000 and why none of that money was allocated to this project.
Question for Patty.
Do you remember, Michael?
Uh, I don't remember, but Patty might, cause I know it was the cemetery commission that was concerned about spending money on this project.
So they need, so they need that $22,000 for something else?
Yeah, weren't you talking about improving the, all the cemeteries?
That's different. This is money they had before.
Before...
Before the $13,000 that was approved for at town meeting. This is money that they already had.
Am I speaking out of turn or you guys pretty much have volunteered everything up there?
Right. Oh, yeah, I'm not suggesting that they should pay it anymore.
No, we, we wanted to make this as seamless as possible.
Right.
And the other thing, so this land belongs to a friend of mine and I, and we're both on board of getting this expansion to fruition. And the only thing I asked is, you know, we would stump it, we would create it clear, we'd make it way... We even, these guys actually generously donated the fence. Alls I wanted was four blocks, two of which I'm gonna donate and two of which I wanna keep. So that was the only thing I said.
For four-person lots?
Yes.
Forgive it a land up.
Huh?
Forgive it a land up.
Forgetting the land up.
I mean, we usually, we only charge like $200 for a four-person lot. We don't get very much for those, so, you know, that's not a problem.
I think we'd waive that fee.
Anyway, that's...
Yeah.
Without a problem.
Yeah. So the surveyor will also lay out the grids, I assume.
This is whatever, I don't...
Otherwise...
Above my pay grade, however they dissect it, you know, it's gonna be theirs and they can do what they see fit with it.
So you mentioned they're going to put the headstones in back and meet, whoa. What's up, Doc?
That's important. That's important.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned that the headstones were gonna be in back, and then the cremations were gonna be front?
Well, you still have headstones with a cremation.
But, so, nothing that's there is going to be, be impacted by, I'm just a newbie on this.
Joyce and Mark Major's well is on the other side of their land, of their house, which is on the, what, the east side?
It's across the road. From the current cemetery.
Right.
So, I don't know why they would, with the way they bury things nowadays compared to where they buried it yesterday. And this cemetery is gonna be behind that.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, it didn't matter, they had an issue, we addressed it.
They had picked up with some number of feet that they found somewhere, a hundred feet or something, well, they found it somewhere.
And infringe on my land, so I, I could just turn it around and say move your well. Not trying to start any neighborhood. They had a little concern, we addressed it by saying, we'll meet the setbacks.
The setback is enough.
With, because there was, half the cemetery is beyond the setback, and they, and they said, okay, so that.
And also, part of the report that I did with my students is looking at the direction in which most of the groundwater is flowing,
Right.
which is into a major tributary, which is on the west side of that system. Right, there's a huge tributary
Yeah.
that's right there, incised. And pretty much all the water percolates in that direction, which is away from an easterly well. So, and we can document that. And then the surveyor can check our documentation. Which is, uh, we'll give it to them, and it's up to, up to them to make sure that we did it right, but we did it right.
So, I guess, I feel up to speed, I don't, except for who's gonna pay for what, how about you guys? Anywhere?
Well, we have money in the budget.
Well.
To pay for a number of things.
Oh, we have, yeah.
Right? And the ser, and so the survey is no problem.
Okay.
And how we allocate the funds.
So, you don't think any of it should come out of the cemetery money that they already have?
I think it should come out of the cemetery money, that's why we allocated it.
Well, that's the, that's the question that I have, because.
I don't think it needs to be answered right now, though, so these guys, they don't have to hang around for that.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure the ball is still rolling.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure nothing's changed. I mean, we have cleared the lot, we've stumped the lot. We're going to be, you know, grading it, seeding it.
Oh, nice.
We're gonna be putting in a little stone for like a little parking lot, if you will.
Cool.
The fence will come later.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're, we're on board for all the things that we committed to.
Nice.
And we just wanna reaffirm that you guys, and I know it's not just you guys, but I guess you're the lightning rod that gets to the cemetery people.
So, did you, are you gonna use any topsoil, or do you think that you?
There's plenty of topsoil there.
Oh, there is, terrific.
Oh, yeah, there's.
It's a terrific piece of land. Yeah, for exactly this purpose.
I wrote down, I gotta go see it.
Yeah, really.
I'll take you for a ride.
Well, me bear it, and we'll get me Tim, we'll get.
We did get rid of that tree.
We go catch up?
So, I don't know. If that goes here or to, I went through you, so I'll let you get that to where it's supposed to go. Is that the bill for getting rid of that tree?
Oh, yes, yeah, alright.
That was the, that was the overhanging, that was the one overhanging?
There was.
That was the only one that was of drastic concern.
Oh, it was, it would've been, it would've been in the cemetery by now.
Yeah, it would've been bad.
That one was gonna go.
And, uh.
Great.
Anyway, I mean.
I'll give it to Randy tomorrow, or somebody.
I'm giving it to Robin.
I'm giving it to Robin.
Give it to Randy.
Yeah, Randy will have it. Was that to you?
Uh, yes. They're, uh, they're enterprises, but there's, there's no hurry on that, I mean, I've been sitting on it, waiting for you to get back.
Well, we'll get it taken care of, right off.
Yep.
Anything else?
So, that's nice to hear that you're gonna seed it and continue to make it nice, and maybe by fall, it'll be ready to.
That's the idea is to, so they can take it over and maintain it, mow it, and, you know. We don't wanna deal with perpetual care. We wanna make it as easy for them to transition into taking it over.
Right.
Great, well, thank you for your.
Appreciate your work, hard work and really the commitment.
So, the next thing is I'll contact the surveyor and talk to her?
Yes, please, and I'll send data to you.
Okay.
And she can take advantage of that as she pleases.
Okay.
And if I can have a date to go out there at the same time,
Okay.
it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Since I've been on the ground with these gentlemen.
Is it staked out?
Yes, it's, it is.
Oh, it is?
Well, we staked it when we were there.
Okay, good, now we.
He might have knocked it down.
It's not staked yet. Yeah, the formal staking. We have a good, we have a good sense of it, so if,
Okay.
it wouldn't, it wouldn't be bad if I came out, so if we could time it correctly.
So, they can be there, Chris.
I would like that very much.
Chris has our contact.
I have your contact information.
You can hold us if you need something.
Yep.
But, you know, I don't think you need us to do what you gotta do.
Nope, but it wouldn't be bad if you guys gave a perspective at the same time.
Know what was going on, what was going on.
Yep. So, a heads up wouldn't be such a bad thing. Does that sound reasonable enough?
Perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for your support.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, guys.
See you, Robin.
See you, Danny.
So, you're up, Chuck.
Patty?
You're up, Chuck.
Patty's all done?
Yeah.
Well, just, what are some things going on right now?
You must wait till Chris gets back.
Alright.
What happens at Old Home, at Old Home Land?
What?
What happens at Old Home?
Oh, well, it's, uh, just gonna try, a bunch of people are trying to put together a gathering or with events to get people here and do things like fun, kids' games, and the library will have something going on, and, uh.
I know on the path, they've also come up with a lot of old photographs of the town, and I expect that may be happening.
Maybe the Historical Society, they did do a nice exhibit a few years ago when we had one. We haven't had this for several, you know.
Is that?
What, when?
Yeah.
It's later in the summer.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Cause I talked to Ken King about getting a bunch of his, but he's got some photos of this town.
So does Sheila Neal.
Yeah, really.
Sheila, Sheila's got all the Historical Society stuff.
Yeah, Ken can, well, some of the his, their historical stuff they got from Kansas.
Yeah.
Most of it, he can still explain this.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
He could be an exhibit, we could give him a tele, give him a special presentation.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fun.
The old storyteller.
Yeah.
Ninety what?
Uh, ninety-four, ninety-five, November. December second. Still more strong, cut six-quarter wood last year.
You did?
Cut it, split it, burned it.
Wow.
Was it log length, or did he go get it out of the woods?
He went and got it, cut the trees, dragged them out, cut it, split it.
Wow.
He's no fool, and.
Well, it's a good way to stay healthy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he probably died doing what he loves.
Yeah.
Playing in the woods. So, um, I got a couple of questions for you, one.
Sure.
What do you know about graders and CDL licenses?
Nothing.
Well, according to what I've found, you don't need to have CDL to drive it, Greg says you do, but.
Uh-huh, I do remember Greg mentioning that.
Everybody in the state of Vermont says you don't have to.
Okay.
No.
So, I'm gonna.
That would be a good question for V-Trans, I think they could answer that question pretty quickly, if you wanna
Or DMV.
Hire authorities.
DMVs already answered it.
Okay.
They said no.
Well, they should know, yeah.
The only reason you need a CDL to operate equipment on the town roads, like a bucket loader, or a grader, or anything like that, was if you transported it with a truck or a trailer. And I'm not gonna be doing that, so. That grader's not being utilized enough right now.
Oh, do you think that roads definitely need to be graded?
Roads could use a little bit of, a little bit of work.
DLC?
Yeah.
A lot.
And I'm trying to be kind, I'm trying to be kind.
And you're gonna be kind enough to volunteer, I don't mean volunteer unpaid, but to actually do some of that work itself? Great.
Did the grader go out today?
It did.
Okay, well, it's good.
Not, not as much as I wanted, but it went out. It got, uh.
Bailey Bridge.
Bailey Bridge Road, the whole length, it's got Town Farm Road.
Town Farm Road.
And a little bit over on the Dog Pond Road.
Yeah, to end the Dog Pond.
Yeah.
What about East Hill?
Nothing.
Yeah.
That's the, that's somewhere.
Yes, I don't.
Well, I was, I was talking to the owner of the bus company, and he said it's pretty tricky up there with them school buses.
Oh, he hit, he caught me Saturday.
He didn't say anything when he was here?
Well, that's not the same one.
That's not the owner of the bus company anymore.
That's not the owner of the bus company anymore.
That's not the owner of the bus company anymore.
Really?
Right.
Oh, interesting.
Yep.
He caught me Saturday, and I had a cauliflower ear tell me I got done. It's on, it's one of the ones on the first part of the list.
Is it still wet?
Yeah.
Yeah, you say that's the last.
It's the last one to dry out.
Well, there's a lot of dry spots up there. Just making a showing with that piece of machinery is gonna be
Significant.
one hell of a feather in somebody's hat.
I remember, Don is the one that convinced the Select Board back in the nineties to put that guardrail up there.
Yeah. The hill is not bad, um, from there up to, to the top of the hill past Eagles, that's, it's not bad. From around that corner up through to the four corners.
It's kind of a nightmare.
Terrible.
And then, then this, and then that single, the, the old schoolhouse, yeah.
Yeah, well, actually, in front of the old schoolhouse, that was pretty good.
Is it?
Over by Menora Thompson's is terrible.
Yeah, that flat area, it's really wet on the other side of the road.
Well, I gotta look at it.
There's no drainage.
Kurt, yeah, Kurt never put a cover in his driveway, and the water's setting both sides of his driveway, about that deep.
There's no, there's no drainage whatsoever.
Well, it's gonna dry out till we get that water out of there.
Did he get a access permit?
Water, well, that was
Oh, God, that.
Thirty-five, forty years.
That was years and years and years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't, well, he and Ken had, Ken had the mill over there before he built.
Yeah.
I had no clue.
Oh, okay, so that's an old, that's a dry one, okay.
And it's, now it's, it won't do any good to put a cover across the driveway, cause there's no water for the water to go, we're gonna have to put a cover here, and a cover here below the driveway. To fix the problem.
To fix, to fix that
Yeah.
part, yeah.
Okay, so, that's my plan right now, is I'm gonna be in that grader for a while. The other plan I got, that I'd like you people to think about, and I probably already know the answer, is I'd like to have you sell me that grader. How you think about it?
Uh, sell the grader, but you're in Florida in the winter.
Don't you worry about that.
You're gonna do it remote control?
No. No, I'll be here.
You're gonna be here?
Walk about middle of March.
You teach me to run it?
That's right.
Yep, me too.
Get a bunch of.
You need a CDL? Probably don't need anything.
Don't need it.
So, the graders not used at all during the wintertime for winging back the slopes and stuff?
Sure it is, yeah.
Yeah. We can make arrangements, they can set it over there, and you can wing them back all day long.
Well, that's gonna be something that's gonna have to take a while to kind of.
Why, I'd only do it after, before you'd start thinking about it.
Got an offer? No, you don't have to say that.
I can have.
Don't bring it up yet.
I would. But, I think it's something you ought to think about, and I think it would save the town some money. And you'll find that the roads will be in a lot better shape a lot faster.
And you really wanna do this?
I do.
But you could, but you're gonna be working on it anyways, right?
This year, I don't plan on living there for the rest of my life, working for the town. But until they get, at least get some help enough to run the grader, and get the roads back into shape, I'm looking at it. Unless, unless somebody really complains tonight, and you three tell me not to.
I'd love for you to work on the grader. For now.
It's just something to think about in future.
It'll need a little bit of work.
Your grader's getting older. You're gonna have to replace it sooner or later.
So you'll get out, you'll get as much as you can out of it, and then when we, when we've, when we have to deal with that, that, uh, situation in terms of a new grader or whatever.
Yeah. I wouldn't be buying the grader with the idea that I was gonna let you take it back.
No, I didn't mean that. No, but the grader isn't gonna last forever.
No, but that would be my responsibility then.
We're thinking about. Thank you Chuck.
Are you gonna come up with a proposal, formal proposal, or how's this gonna be rendered?
I ain't gonna do anything until you three batted around, see if you even interested.
But I think we'd have need a little more information on how you think this might work before we can really discuss it.
We'll, we'll discuss it in a different setting than this.
Okay.
Maybe we can go to, set a time and place to do that.
After, you set a time and place to do.
Well, we can go into, we can go an executive session at some point. And we can have a conversation about it.
Yeah, you'd have to warn them.
We'll warn executive session and then we'll, we can go into it.
Can you wait until?
Again, as long as you want.
Yeah, I won't be here for the next meeting, but I will be.
So we should have enough money in the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund to actually purchase a new piece of equipment. I'm not saying that it would be a grader, but um, we should have, and we're going, keeping the money in there, not replacing anything so that we could buy something outright. Um, and I think we're pretty close to having enough in there to buy a new plow truck.
We were, we were planning on buying a truck. That's what we were gonna use that fund for.
Haven't even seen that Highway Equipment Reserve Fund spreadsheet.
It's
It's not even, no.
It's in the town report.
No, I know it was in last year, I'm not sure it was.
With, not with, with the next, the new fiscal year that's coming up this summer, there should be enough money in there to get, um, so, um, and what, what we've heard, you know, of late is that you know, like if we were gonna replace one of the plow trucks, um, that we would kind of need to commit a year ahead of time. That's, that's kind of the way the market has been.
Yep, gotta buy it a year in advance. So we buy twenty-two and get it in twenty-three. Try it in twenty-three, get it in twenty-four. That's the best we can possibly do for the turnaround on, on those trucks. If we get the truck that we really want. We could get a truck that we don't want tomorrow. That's not, that's not the goal of this. We wanna make sure that we get the right truck.
Yeah, it should go out to bid a little bit.
What, we have to, right? We have to put it out to bid.
Yeah.
I don't have a choice about that.
I'm done with the grader, but I, you guys can think about it. If you think it's something you might wanna talk about, we'll talk about it.
Definitely, yeah.
And
Thanks Chuck.
We'd have to ask him how, well.
I, I, I think that for the time being, while we're mulling it around, I think that the goal of the select board is to do the best we can on the roads that
Right, and that's what we're gonna do.
In rough shape right now.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yep, so.
So who've we got working now?
Greg. Greg.
And Tim?
Well.
Not really.
If you call it. You're being kind if you do.
Oh, okay. Oh, and he is the other guy, the Dave Pike, did he?
I don't know anything about that.
No, Greg hasn't called him.
Oh, really?
Nope, never followed up.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't discourage anybody like that.
Really?
Yeah.
You discouraged Greg to do that?
Yeah. I thought I had a guy that filled out an application, but you haven't seen anything of him, right?
We would've seen it by now.
And we have a
Well, they have until Friday.
Right.
We have an application?
One.
One application.
One app.
Four have been requested, but there's only one back.
One more has been requested, or?
Four.
Four have been requested, oh, okay. Because the, uh, the deadline that we set was kind of artificial. You know, we tried to, wanna get people interested as soon as possible, but if we don't get anybody, then we extend the deadline.
I've got to call, well, I did call, uh, Dave Upson last March. And you got me the, the contractor agreement with Hardwick and sent it to me.
Yeah.
So I've gotta get ahold of Dave now that I'm back. He wanted me to wait till we got back, so I gotta call him. And he wants to meet with the select board and me and him to go over what's actually happening with, I don't know, if you call it a contract or agreement.
Well, see, what it was, a mutual, um.
Agreement of mutual understanding.
Agreement, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's what we got, and it's five days worth of work with our trucks for them plowing West Woodbury.
Right.
Which is a good deal.
Really?
He thought that we were taking advantage of them, but the advantage was they lost the advantage by then, his rope forming, not telling us what he wanted to do.
Taking advantage of the agreement.
Yeah, cause last year.
So they didn't need it, or they didn't think to use it last year, but that was the agreement, five days of trucking and?
He, I'd have to read it exactly, yeah. And it, uh, we ended up last year giving them fourteen loads of gravel and putting it in place.
Really?
Because we couldn't get anything out of Tommy.
Out of what?
Out of Tommy fat.
Tommy fat.
Rope forming.
Rope forming.
So we wanted to do something so that we didn't lose them plowing West Woodbury, so that's what we did, but.
You just brought some gravel and dumped it there for them, huh?
No, they told us where they want.
Okay, so you did get something.
Was it on Cape Book Road before you got to the intersection, or is it where, where, where?
Usually with the agreement, it's not that the Woodbury Road Crew will work on Cape Book Road, it's any place.
Any place, yeah.
Any place in Harwick.
I think this is Bunker Hill, but I'm not sure.
Oh.
At times in the past, we've hauled winter sand for them, um, they had a big project, you know, digging up a road and putting in a bunch of stone and the road crew, you know, was a part of that for a week's worth of work.
Yeah, Dave Upson is leaning towards us hauling their winter sand. So we can do it at our leisure. I mean, as long as we know what we got to do.
It could be a really fair deal.
Is it, are you taking that out of gravel? Where are you taking, what, what, what pit are you using for that?
Or where, where do they get their sand?
Right, same place.
Same place.
Are we gonna have to go through another contract this year?
You will, yes. A three-year contract is up, so that'll have to happen sometime this summer.
With the sand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Winter sand.
Winter sand is up. Gonna have to review it.
Well, anyway, so I'm gonna set up a meeting for that, for that to happen sometime between now and this fall, so if earlier than that, then later. Next meet, next meeting?
No, I won't be here, but the one after I will be.
And that will be May?
June something.
June, no, no, it's May twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Wait, May twenty-third.
Trying to do it for that?
And we should also have the executive session at that time, too. Yes?
Well, yeah.
No?
I suppose we could. May twenty-third is a Saturday.
So.
Oops, though. Wrong thing.
May twenty-third is Monday.
We'll do it on Monday.
Okay.
Stick one right there.
There's one right here.
Okay.
So, but we can't really.
That would be great. Could we, could we plan for it for the twenty-third?
And I've got a copy of the agreement that we had that I'm gonna drop off to. So he can have it pre-read and come up with what he wants to do.
That'll give us a month, basically.
If you need another copy, I got one.
Okay, yeah.
That'll give us a month for the new select board to review the
There you go.
Senior gravel.
Well, and like I say, he's leaning towards us putting however many days towards their sand plot, which is cool. I mean, whatever rainy day, we can send boat trucks out and knock it out. Whatever, you know, two, three days.
Yep.
Um, it's a good deal for us not to have to dechain a truck and rechain it to go to West Woodbury.
Absolutely.
They're already there.
So you're stock, they're stockpiling the sand, we're stockpile, for them.
Stockpiling their winter sand, yeah.
And in return?
They clear the West Woodbury roads.
They clear.
And sand them.
And sand them.
With their sand.
That we supplied.
That you, you haul.
We hauled it, but they paid for it.
So our trucks, our, our trucks don't have to go up there at all during winter time.
That's the, that's the idea, is that we're not traveling to West Woodbury with our trucks.
West Woodbury really appreciate that because, um, when they got wind of the fact that there might be some changes in this mutual agreement, uh, we definitely heard about that.
And I think if we had, if, if Tim and Bear were still here, they would've agreed with that very strongly.
Oh, yeah.
According to the folks in West Woodbury, back when Woodbury plowed the roads, they usually didn't get there until late morning.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah, they done all the bus routes here before they went out there.
And the bus routes were another story, all for themselves up there.
Right.
And there were people that, that, well, they used to have people doing it themselves with, with, you know, school bus on top of it.
But, so I'll set that up for the twenty-third then.
Thank you.
Please, thanks, it's great.
Um.
But like you said, if we've got all summer to think about it, so if it doesn't work for some reason or another.
Well, but we, yeah, if it doesn't work, I mean, if we, doesn't work.
Oh, sure.
I don't wanna let it go right up and down.
No, no, no.
I really don't wanna, I really don't wanna wait now. We can get it done.
Yeah.
We've got plenty of other work that needs to get done over the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is rainy day work.
Yeah, I got some work for you.
Tell me.
We put fill all along the top of the cabot road from the top of the hill down through to the new quarry road.
Yep.
And they've got that big pile of stones setting down there.
I know, still waiting.
Well, Little Bird told me today that Swinson's has decided they're gonna buy their own crusher and they're gonna start selling that stuff for twelve dollars a yard. His town needs to be jumping on it.
We need to take advantage of it.
So they have that huge pile on the lower, you know, that new gate is, that's?
Well, this was a conversation that the select board had a couple of years ago. We decided to walk away from it because the price was good, but the stone wasn't exactly what we needed.
Well, yeah, on the three-inch stone, the price is good, but on the inch and a half and the three-quarter inch is terrible.
Terrible.
We could buy it for almost a dollar less than what we were gonna pay for it.
And it's a different type of stone.
Yeah.
But you're talking about that crush stuff that's, that's it's quite a pile.
Crush granite.
It's only about, there's about thirty-five hundred yards there.
They would have to get an amendment to their act two fifty permit if they decide to do that.
I don't care.
No, I mean, I'm just saying. It's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen very fast.
Well, I think, but I, I don't know that I would bet on that one.
I'm pretty sure that they're gonna move that stone no matter what.
And they're gonna put crusher in there because they got no more room to put gravel.
Uh, so.
Cause that'd be that much more wear there on our roads. And if they go through act two fifty, we'll get to ask for some more money for the, you know, support the additional wear and tear on our roads.
But can't we use it for culverts and all sorts of stuff?
The big stone.
Oh, the stuff that we buy, yeah.
The big stone we can use for culverts, we can use it for a bunch of different things, can't we?
But I'm thinking that since, that you know that people up there pretty well, that they should be donating enough to go from the top of that hill down to their new road.
Well, for that. All right, I'll talk to Kevin. Fair enough, who have you been talking to?
Who have I been talking to?
Yeah.
Didn't you just resurface that whole thing last year?
I know, Little Bird.
What's that?
Didn't you just resurface that whole road from the new quarry road?
But we didn't whiff it.
We didn't.
You didn't what?
Whiffing it.
Whiffing it?
Yeah.
Make it wider.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Right now, from the top, right now from the top of the hill down to their new road. Two eighteen-wheelers that are loaded are not knocking it. And have good luck.
Whoa. Yeah.
So that road needs to be shoved out there. We put the fill in and everything, put the base in. Now we've gotta put top load on it so you can start actually using it for a road. And maybe they want you to benefit from it. So that's the page I'm on right there.
Yeah.
Chuck, I'll, I'll, I'll call around. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Should've given it to us in the first place.
Did McDonald do all that work, uh, crushing and stuff when they?
They did.
They did.
Yeah.
And that's Swinson, we're gonna, you're gonna drag this meeting on all night. Cause Swinson gave us all the rock we wanted.
Yeah.
But we had to pay McDonald the crusher. They wanted fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents a yard.
Ridiculous, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that now.
That was the souring of the deal.
That was the souring of the deal.
It was, it was a great deal until they come up with a crusher.
Swinson came up with a crazy number.
And there had to be a certain amount that we were gonna commit to, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I think it was a.
If it's been down around twelve dollars a yard like it's gonna be now, that would've been a good deal. Cause we committed the same thing, we done the same thing with gravel construction, didn't we?
Yep.
We bought thirty-five hundred yards from now, and it was one of the best deals we ever made.
Yep, but this was gonna be expensive for no reason.
Right, and we had to take our own loader up there to load it.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't bring it down. So we walked away.
Well, anyway, then if we needed some, we would've had to bring a loader up there, which is.
But that's not reasonable.
A big deal, the price is right, but when you're paying a dollar more a yard than you can get it loaded for. The risk of it just don't, in my book, don't add up. But, so, um, and gravel construction is still, is selling the gravel like we bought, like we pre-bought last year for twelve seventy-five a yard this year, and that's what we're putting on our roads.
And they, and they're holding on that price? I thought that, that was up for, uh, renewal, or no?
Not this.
Not that.
They crushed it last year, they were selling it for twelve seventy-five, and they still are. Put the crush last year.
But that's the part we already paid for, right? To buy a bunch of, a couple.
We put thirty-five hundred yards of gravel on our roads last year.
No, but I mean.
Yeah.
Didn't you just come to us, uh, well, you weren't here, but, but you were here on, on the tube, um, that we bought a bunch of, maybe it was sand. That we bought.
Fifteen hundred dollars worth of.
There you go.
Sand.
Was it fifteen? I thought it was more than that, okay.
Well, it's three, it's gonna be three thou, we got, we gotta have three thousand dollars worth.
Yeah.
He had a pile down there and he figured it, it was about fifteen hundred dollars worth.
Okay.
And we could buy it for, I forgot what it was, it was gonna be seven eighty a yard and we bought it for seven twenty-five or something like that by pre-buying it.
Okay.
So we've got fifteen yards of sand setting down there, but.
So that sand as opposed, and now you're talking about gravel.
No, yeah.
Gravel from gravel, okay. So the twelve seventy-five is gravel, not sand.
Yeah, and it's good gravel.
Okay. We don't have to bid the gravel, but we have to bid the sand. Whatever.
Well, the sand is over eight thousand dollars, that's what we have to put.
Oh, okay, and the gravel is just.
Gravel's not.
That little pile of sand that Chuck's just talking about, that was on.
It was under the, under, under the quarter.
Yeah.
And that was last year's price. We bought it for last year's price.
Right.
So when they get ready to start screening this year.
It's gonna go up.
Yeah.
A lot.
Be, I bet it'll be at least a dollar a yard more.
Easily.
Isn't everything?
Based on trucking prices alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they're gonna sell this stone up here for five dollars a yard, you people need to be thinking about jumping on some of that. Because right now we're paying fourteen seventy-five over to Bickford's, and we gotta haul it.
And, and that's a long way, you're going from Marshfield.
It's a rough road, too.
But that twelve dollars, is that, is that, is that been, um, have they, have they put that out?
Not yet, but Randy and I are pretty good friends, a foreman up here on the quarry. That's what he told me yesterday, this morning, that it was gonna be, they were gonna sell it for twelve dollars a yard. And they wanted to move another crusher in there, but they can't find one, so they're gonna buy one, I guess.
If you have a tentative plan with Randy Cleveland to get that done, I think we can.
I think it's pretty solid.
I think we can make it work.
He's always been pretty straight-shooter with me.
I don't, I, I don't have any reason to question it.
All right.
All right, um, I think we'll have to talk about it, but I don't see any reason that we can't
Well, yeah.
Move it forward, but we gotta do it quick.
Get it nailed down, I mean.
We gotta do it quick.
Well, it sounds to me like that it's gonna be a continuous thing.
Well, we'd like to move, we'd like to move some of that stone sooner rather than later, yeah?
Well, work on them with the net road out.
All right.
That'll take a fair shot.
Okay.
That'll probably take seven, eight hundred yards right down to there.
Right down to the bottom of it.
So the stuff that they have up there now, is the three-inch stuff or the?
They got both.
They got both, it's a mix.
Inch, yeah.
Inch and a quarter, and they got a three-inch.
All right, inch and a quarter.
Inch and a quarter and three inches, that's what they got right now, as far as I know.
Yeah.
All right.
But I'm going back up tomorrow and talk with him some more.
Have they started using that new road, their new entrance?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
That's her, skip.
I have to assign a nine-one-one address. With that new Kirkup.
Ah.
Got an email from, uh, Robert today. Somebody up there tomorrow.
Maybe I'll see ya.
Maybe I'll see you guys both.
Yeah, um. There's gonna be a problem.
No question.
Cause the guys that are hauling stone up there say they're not gonna chain out. And there ain't no way they're gonna come off the top of that mountain. And there ain't no way they're gonna come off top of that mountain. Down the Cabot Road, down over there weighing a hundred thirty thousand all winter, on sand.
On sand?
Ain't gonna happen.
So, they have to chain now, right?
Nope.
I mean, it's in their, it's on their permit that we give them for overweight. Says everybody has to do that, but they don't, huh?
Not from the old Quarry Road, no one chains.
We talking about moving, moving granite here?
Moon blocks.
So what do they do with the old Quarry Road, anything now?
They're hoping to give it up.
Hoping to donate that.
They have, they've had a lot of problems bringing the trucks in and out of that road.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're hoping to give that up.
I thought I heard they were gonna go in one way and out the other.
That's what I remember hearing too, yeah.
He talked about, but M. Shaw put it into that.
Yeah, M. Shaw said.
Yeah.
Who put it, who to put it into?
M. Shaw.
M. Shaw.
They didn't like that idea.
Didn't like a loop road idea, especially with the quality of that road.
Oh.
Right, and the narrowness of it, that's what the, what, the, the tall drop-offs going off the edge of it and stuff.
Yeah.
They made him put the, there's a barriers the whole length of it.
Oh my, huh.
It has some trucks get.
Yeah.
Get pretty sideways.
Yeah.
On that road. Cause it goes right up against a granite face, and it's an entirely filled road.
Yeah.
It's built on grout.
Hmm.
Alright, what else?
Um. Oh. They're way behind over there on their maintenance, cause they don't have any help and stuff.
At the garage?
Yeah.
Our garage?
And I talked to Tim McClay, he's a friend of mine over in Rashfield, good mechanic. Said he could give us two, three days to come over and help get things caught up. Little oil changes to do, grease jobs. Uh, stutter on the excavator, just a lot of work there.
He's done some work for the town.
He has, he does a good job.
So, Greg used to be a mechanic, does he, changing oil is, is, is?
It's awful hard to sign that grade, you can change your oil truck.
I was just gonna say, if you're gonna be in the grade, or what is Greg gonna be doing?
He best be getting out and snapping more and some rotads, is what I'm planning.
Yeah.
Now, and that's another thing I wanna talk to you about this year too. Instead of doing all the brushing, all the ditching in the culverts and stuff, we'll do just minor ditching in culverts. And focus on cutting brush.
It'd be a catch back up, which we give.
I, we won't catch up this year.
No, but it's a start to catch up.
We got sixty, eighty thousand dollar mower machine sitting over there, it's got about ten hours on it.
It's getting kinda rusty.
Yeah. And it's time to put it to work.
It didn't, you, you didn't do any mowing last year, did you?
Hardly get some.
Yeah, we, yeah, uh, we had.
About ten hours worth.
We, yeah, we got started on it and, uh, we had to have some warranty work done on one of the valves in the center of the housing. And it took forever to get fired. So, no, we didn't do much, but I really think we need to this year.
Ten to agree.
Kind of up to you and Greg, I guess. What needs to be done, you, you make the priorities, right?
Well.
I think hiring an outside contractor to get some of that work done in the shed.
Yeah, I don't plan on having it for a long time, but two, three days will catch it up where. If we happen to get somebody we can hire, we should be able to handle it after that.
So he'll have to do all of the, of Randy, if Randy was here, she would be telling us what. Nobody, Randy, anybody that we hire outside of a town.
He's already in.
He's, he's, he's got all his information.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm kinda speaking for Randy who.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we've hired, but we've hired him in the past.
Right.
So he's already established.
Right.
And so to have him work on contract shouldn't be a big deal.
No.
And it doesn't require our, our opinion, in a way.
Really?
Well, I just.
But I think, but I think, I appreciate, appreciate hearing about it. But I think that getting the, getting the equipment running, so that we have a new hire potentially. And you can be running a third person, that sounds pretty good to me.
Good, well, I just wanna make sure everybody knows what page I'm on.
I hear it.
Alright.
I, I have one other thing to add, and I've been meaning to connect with Chuck about this too, is that I did meet with, um. The project manager for District Six, the new district that we're in, um, and we went over the numbers and paperwork. Um, and that's what that, um, um, form was, they, hopefully you guys signed today so I can send it back to them. So, you know, we got our V. Trans allotment, or projected allotment, um, we talked about, um. Uh, different, like the municipal road and general permit. So, and we did budget some for a project, um, it wouldn't be a lot of work, but it would be kind of, we've gotta figure out where we wanna do that. And then, um, I asked about an extension for the design of the box culvert here in the village. Cause I hadn't gotten to that yet, and, uh, the grant runs out, um, at the end of this fiscal year, which probably wouldn't give. A civil engineer enough time to do it, so, um, um, kind of, um. Wipe the sweat off my brow, and I can ask for an extension so that we won't lose out on that.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, and I'll be, we'll be dealing with District Seven for that, because they're the ones that, that gave us the, the grant. So, um, um, yeah, now, the, the district, the person I met with, her name is Michelle Redmond, she's kind of a project manager. And the district manager does wanna come and meet the town, wants to.
Gerald, Gerald.
Yeah, that's his first name, I can't remember his last name.
I can't either.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I've gotta call him too.
Okay.
Cause he wants to set up a meeting with.
Yeah, yeah, she mentioned that.
Yeah.
That's a name, that's a name you don't hear too much anymore, Gerald.
Yeah. Nice enough guy, seems to be. He didn't follow through real good on the Apron Dance Footy still, but that was kind of a.
It was a, it was, it was a weird in-between times, I don't know if I can put that on him necessarily.
Well, and I haven't, I haven't, I just chopped it up that we got something and.
We got something.
Are you gonna leave? No?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I'm not asking you.
I'm done. I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you Chuck.
Yeah, thank you.
Long winded.
Well, no, no, it's great to see you back.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've done the town plan already, thank you Skip very much.
Thank you Skip, take care.
I was gonna hold you, Skip, okay Chuck?
Um, appointments.
So, I should have, um. I wrote this wrong, it says other positions should be advertised, I should have said should other appointments positions be advertised. So, that's what we have to decide whether to go out and advertise that the planning commission needs one more member. The zoning board of adjustment needs one more member, we need an emergency management director, a health officer, and a town energy coordinator.
And, and the planning commission does have one person that they would like to select or to appoint tonight. We did discuss having another member, we're open to that, but, um.
Well, they've only got, if, with this one person you have, you have six, and there should be seven.
Well.
There always has been seven, it's an odd number, most communities have an odd number.
Yeah, well, there have been six of us for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
We usually do things by consensus rather than.
No, I realize that, we don't need.
Who's the new member?
Uh, well, you have to appoint her, um, the select board is recommending that you appoint Elizabeth Higgins.
Oh, great.
Planning commission.
For the planning commission.
Oh, that's right, she came in to, and asked to be appointed, she did?
She asked to be appointed to the town, um, meeting committee, but then she decided she'd rather be on the planning commission.
I grabbed her first.
Oh, mother. I think she's pretty smart.
I make a motion to appoint Lizzie Higgins to the town planning commission?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It just seems like, you know, we should be. Transparent about that stuff.
Yeah.
And, uh, so if somebody else wants to be on the planning commission, they should have an opportunity.
I agree.
I agree. And she's a good one.
There should be another one that might be.
Zoning Board of Adjustment?
Yeah.
That one we'd have to advertise as far as I know, I haven't seen it.
Well, like I said, there's one more planning commissioner. Uh, in addition of Lizzie, there's, there should be a seventh member, um, Board of Adjustment, uh, we had a resignation. Need to have another member there. We really need an emergency management coordinator and a health officer, those are very important jobs that don't get a lot of. Work involved, but it's just, when you need one, you really need one.
It's not the most fun work usually.
Typically not.
Yeah.
And town energy coordinator, you know, there's, so somebody could grab onto that and actually make something of it.
And the planning commission, our last meeting last week, we did talk about, um, possibility of, of actually having an energy committee. That would be part of the planning commission, and there were two people that were interested in, in trying to get that started.
Like a subcommittee of the planning commission? I mean, the town can have a planning, can have a, an energy committee.
Yeah.
Can we set up an energy committee if you?
Yeah, there were, there's two people on the planning commission, um, myself and Jim Scheithelm. Would be interested in being on that committee if the select board wanted to.
Set one up.
Create one.
And what would the, um. What would they?
Do?
Yeah.
Uh, well, we do have, part of the town plan is an enhanced energy plan. Um, so they would help implement some of the things in that, and probably would do quite a bit of coordinating of, um. Like maybe speakers to come in and talk about fixing up your old smoky wood stove, um, or, um. You know, just different places to cite, uh, renewable energy, or hanging with the Hardwick Electric Department to try to. Any, anybody that's part of Hardwick Electric Department who wanted to have solar panels on their roof or whatever. Um, they've reached a cap, and so there are.
Cherry's denied.
There isn't anyone that, that could do that right at the moment. And at the same time, the state is pushing for towns, every town to do their share for this, you know. Total renewable energy by twenty fifty, which, you know, will never happen, but, um, so. To, you know, towns that are kind of, uh, served by Hardwick Electric, um, are kind of stuck in the middle with. There are people, private individuals who would like to, um, have solar panels or whatever, um, but there's no way that they can. That they can do that right now.
Didn't Hardwick Electric install a big, uh, array of solar panels for themselves?
Yep.
Did that affect their, their, their?
I have no idea, I don't know.
We don't get to.
But if the town paid for it, or if the Hardwick Electric paid for it themselves, or? I mean, if it's, if it's one of them, then.
But I know it wasn't private, it was, it was the, it was Hardwick Electric, I believe, that did it.
So would that make it as a town energy committee and not a coordinator from now on out?
It would be, instead of one person, it would be a small group of people.
If there was a town, if we could find someone who wanted to be the town energy coordinator, they could, they could head up an energy committee. There is an official position somewhere in the books.
And I served in that role for a number of years, hardly ever had time to do anything, I did get LED lights for the streetlights, that was. Pretty easy. But, um, yeah, I just never had really any time to.
So what would be, what, what would be the call for, or need for an energy coordinator?
Well.
Execute what is already approved in the town plan as best as possible.
Yeah, there's not, there's not really much, but I mean, there's opportunities if somebody wanted, I mean, like Hardwick. They have had an energy committee for quite a while, I'm not sure if they.
Most towns have a committee instead of.
Instead of an individual person.
People together and they can think of things to do.
Right.
So what are we gonna do, are we doing anything on this matter?
Well, I.
I, I just threw that out, that's just food for thought.
Well, we have to advertise, we have to advertise for an additional planning commission member. A member for the Board of Adjustment, our emergency management director, our health officer. And at least one person who is the town energy coordinator. We have to advertise for those positions.
Have we advertised yet for any of those positions?
Not really, no, I don't know. Get all the appointments to the ones that were, we already.
Do we have to move on this?
Not really, I think we should do it, but.
We should just do it.
Yeah, okay, I'll put something together.
Okay, and can we get it up on FPF?
Yeah.
And on the town page?
Yeah.
Mr. Eky, is it okay that it's on the town page, that doesn't?
That's on my page.
It's a town page, right?
Actually, actually, Teagan is, uh, has offered to do an additional. Text kind of stuff if we need anything, working on the website and things like that, she says she, and she could also probably. Introduce us to, what was it, the Google Pages?
Google Drive.
Huh?
Google Drive.
Yeah, that whole, um, new way of sharing documents and stuff like that, that we might. Don't wanna get, uh, acquainted with at some point. But, yeah, if we come up with a list, she can put it on the website, put it on the. Front porch forum, if Robin wants to do it, that'd be good.
Okay. Go onto the town meeting committee?
Okay. I did make these, uh, what did I do, made all these copies. To remind you, these are the six, um, people that we had showing interest.
Yeah, I think there was a good response here. And, not that I'm favoring my son, but I think that it, there's a good, good blend of people. And, uh, and I think people step forward, uh, realizing it's an important issue.
Yeah.
And John, John, of course, uh, will have a, um, role in this.
We already appointed John to be the chair.
Right.
And, but he still sent in his little blurb here.
Yeah, I know.
So things good. Do we have to move on this?
We should.
We have to make the appointments.
We have to, well, make them all, or five, five hundred?
I think we should take them all.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the five applicants to the town committee.
Six.
Excuse me, six applicants to the town meeting committee as stands. Joan's already appointed though, so that doesn't really count.
Thank you.
So, the five applicants.
Yeah.
To the town meeting committee as stands. Should I read the names?
Please.
Alex Pelz. Jonah Meacham. Gwendolyn Marsha. Jane Oldgordonno.
And Ellie Hayes.
And Ellie Hayes.
Heard the motion, you a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move.
I'll let John know.
So we're going to executive session over Sylvia Jackson?
Got one more thing as a taxpayer.
Please.
Old Quarry Road. I buy Isabel's.
Isabel.
Jezebel Isabel.
Jezebel, whoever.
Yeah.
Across the road, there's another little shack that they dropped up there, and it's in the town right of way.
A horse, but was it Shed, Elizabeth Shed?
Yeah, something like that, and she's living in it. And it's, the building is in the town right of way.
Oh.
Okay.
It needs to be moved.
Hmm.
But. Uh, Jezebel's after me to have it done, as a road commissioner. But I'm thinking that the zoning administrator needs to be the one leading the handle on this.[1589.61]